Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us this evening. The Muslim Association of Virginia Boy Scouts would be first lead us in the Pledge of Legions and the Lord's Prayer.
Scouts, attention. Call or guard, take your position. Call or guard, advance. Call or guard, post the collar. Please join me in honoring the flag of our country. Scout salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Praise be to Allah, the Lord of the world, the Most Gracious, the Most Precious, Master of the day of judgment. Be alone we worship and be alone we seek help. Guide us on the straight path, the path of those on whom you have bestowed your favor, not of those who have earned your anger, nor of those who have been direct. Scouts, dismiss.
A round of applause for these. Thank you all for coming. I believe this is the third and final Principal County Board of School Board Chairman Debate. My name is Uriah Peiser. I am the publisher of Potomac Local News, PotomacLocal.com. I am a native of Prince William County. I grew up here at Dale City. I graduated from CD Hilton High School and for the past five years, I have been your publisher of PotomacLocal.com. As you may already know, we are solely focused on the news and events of the people who live here in Prince William County and in Stafford County. So enough about me. I will begin on introductions for our three candidates who joined this year for this debate. And we'll do this by last name in alphabetical order. And that's the order that I chose to go in for the introduction. Tracy Conroy is a registered nurse with a bachelor of science degree in healthcare administration. She has worked in neurology, oncology, and infusion therapy while holding positions in management, quality assurance, and program development. Currently, Conroy works as an independent contractor with Infusion Pharmacy in North Carolina. Her husband, Chris, the owner of Bristow Remodeling and investors in Prince William County. Conroy and her husband have two boys, Nathan, 16, and Kyle, 14, both of whom attend Prince William County Public Schools. Brian Sawyers, next to me, owns a sports marketing company. He holds a bachelor's degree from West Virginia Wesleyan College at Spokane, West Virginia. He holds a master's degree from West Virginia University. Sawyers was raised in Allagana County, Maryland. After coaching baseball for 13 seasons, Sawyers and his family moved to Gainesville, where he is president of Bull Run Little League. Sawyers' two children attend Glen Kirk Elementary School. Brian is a member of the Prince William Committee of 100 and volunteers at Marion's Kitchen in Washington, DC. Tim Siegstock is a graduate of Potomac Senior High School in Woodbridge and attended Virginia Tech on an Army ROTC scholarship. He served as an officer in the Army's 25th Infantry Division and 101st Airborne Division. Siegstock is a certified project management professional who has managed IT projects. He is currently self-employed, working as an accountant. Siegstock served as chairman of the Prince William Sage Schools Advisory Council and serves as the Ockham District Finance Chair for the Boy Scouts. Siegstock has three children, went to Prince William County Public Schools. He lives with his family in Moncler. Let me thank all three of these candidates for being here this evening. We will begin with questioning here in a second, just to give you an idea of how this will work. We do have a timekeeper. Mr. Wiggins will be keeping time. I will ask a question of a specific candidate. That specific candidate will have three minutes to answer that question. Once you get down to 30 seconds, Mr. Williams will hold up your wonderful golden log sheet of paper right there. And once you get out of time, you will see the red card or pink cards this evening. Then the other two candidates will get two minutes to make their vote to that question. Is everyone clear on how this will work? Good. We'll begin. First question goes to Mr. Sawyers. Research indicates children from lower socio-economic backgrounds struggle to meet the same performance standards as children from loved your families. What do you see as the role of the school board chairman in addressing the needs of children who come to Prince William County Public Schools, to the classrooms, adding educational disadvantage?
Well, first and foremost, thanks to the mosque for hosting this great event. It's wonderful and I very appreciate the opportunity to be able to share our ideas for the next four years that the chairman wants to host here in Prince William County. First and foremost, like my bio said, I was raised in Allagana County, Maryland, which if you're not familiar with it, is the hub of Allagana County, Maryland, is Cumberland, Maryland, which is in the heart or on the edge of the heart of Appalachia. So Allagana County is about 72,000 people in total, so there's more kids in our school system now than there is in the county that I grew up in total. The reality is, I grew up basically as an economically disadvantaged child. My father is a small-town newspaper journalist, my mom is a social worker. They bought their home, they still live in today, and built their home for about $50,000 in 1986. So it is certainly an economically depressed area. The reason someone like me was able to get a good education in rural western Maryland was because of Maryland being a smaller state. We also had a very dense tax base down on the I-95 corridor that everyone knows just across from DC. That allowed someone like me who lives in the rural part of the world to get a good education where the money necessary, the tax base didn't exist to be there, to provide that education. And teachers could also afford to live in the community based on the salary they made. The reality is that it costs more to educate poor children than it does to educate those from wealthier families. The reason is those families aren't necessarily home to be there to help as often as they would like because they're working one, two, three, full-time jobs, maybe even four full-time jobs between them. There's all sorts of different reasons. So the reality is the major role to answer the question that the school board and the school board chairman in particular can play in that is to make sure that we have the appropriate funding to make sure that those schools get what they need to help those children the best they can. Currently, Prince William County has a revenue sharing agreement in which the school gets a set percentage on what they're allowed to receive from the tax revenue within Prince William County. Every other jurisdiction, every other local government body gets to make the case for their funding every year. They get to say whether we need more for this reason, we need more for that reason. The school system currently has to fight a revenue sharing agreement in order to get more funding for the school system. I advocate that we get rid of that revenue sharing agreement, or at least make a floor and not a ceiling, so that way the school system can ultimately build the schools, fund the teachers that we need to teach, excuse me, fund the teachers in a proper way so they get better take on pay, so they can make a better, longer-lasting impact on our children. And ultimately, I think that's the difference between me and my two conservative opponents, is that I want to find a way to make sure we get proper funding for our school system.
In going in order, we'll do it in a minute.
Hi, I want to thank everybody for having me here. It's great to be back. Thank you for opening up the doors for us to be here today. I'm going to jump right into Rivarette. Education starts in the home. Some of us are blessed with parents who, like Brian, who came from an area with some needs, but they came from, obviously, a family who valued education. That is where it starts, at the home, where we need the families to be involved. A lot of times with our economically disadvantaged populations, they're unable to be involved because of situations like work, often we're looking at one-parent households. It's hard to combat what a child doesn't have at home. Thirty-seven percent of our students in Prince William County grow up receiving free or reduced lunch. We're in one of the richest counties in the country, and yet we have students that go home that are hungry, they don't get dinner. Some of them are not getting food on the weekend or good nutrition. Many of our local schools do what's called a backpack, weekend backpacks. They provide for every student on Fridays, they'll have food to eat over the weekend. It's extremely disturbing to know that this is a reality in our county. How do we combat that? We need to bring, we need to be communities. We need our families involved. We need the school to be the community center that it used to be, and we'll make that again. That's the best way to help our students. Also, we need to look at funding formulas that we address the needs with a little bit more money, which they definitely will require. Thank you.
Good evening, Prince William families and friends and neighbors. Thank you, Potomac Local and Dara Lawrence, for hosting this event tonight. One quick clarification, four kids, two of which are in Prince William County Schools. We improve our school system by doing three things. My top three priorities, number one, class size reduction, starting with middle school, where the problem is most acute. Number two, more competitive pay for our teachers, treating our teachers like educators, like the professionals that they are, so we can contain them here in Prince William County. And number three, offering a safe, healthy, and drug-free learning environment for our kids and for our staff. A part of the question, talk about the issue as I hear, of equity. And if you look at our capital improvement plan over the next five years, we're going to spend $800 million in capital improvements. Five, more than 500 is going to go into new school construction. I think we need to be looking at the part of the capital improvement plan that can expand existing schools here in eastern Prince William County, especially along the Route 1 corridor, and upgrade and renovate our existing schools so that at least when you walk into the school building, there is not such disparity as you have between schools on the west and schools on the east. And the second issue that we need to focus on, that's the class size reduction. That improves the quality of education, but so do partnerships with our community. And we have a community here in Prince William County, a faith-based civic and business community that wants to engage with our public school system. They do so through the robotics program, they do so through technical programs. And so we need a school board chair who will act as the chief advocate for public education and reach out and partner with our community here in Prince William County. Together, we build a stronger school system and we build a better Prince William County.
Thank you, Mr. Siegstock. I'm going to ask the following question. We'll start with Ms. Conroy. I'm going to give you each one minute to follow up. So one minute, one minute on the clock, please. Ms. Conroy, you said that schools need to become centers of community once again. Is the current school, is the school system in Prince William County currently taking advantage of other centers of community, like churches, like community centers such as this, to partner and help provide that needed assistance that you talked about? Is that happening right now? Is it happening to the level it needs to happen? One minute.
We have site-based management in Prince William County, so some schools are very good at forming partnerships. Porter and Pennington are excellent examples of schools that have really connected with the community partners. There are other schools that haven't done as well. And again, going back to the economics, some of our communities don't have a very active PTO or parental involvement based off of economics. The parents simply are not able to get there. So a lot of times, your PTO is the one that's reaching out to those community partners. It puts schools with very high economically disadvantaged numbers behind others.
Mr. Sawyers?
Ultimately, I think a lot of individual families do choose to take part in whether it be church, temple, service of any kind, they would like to be a part of. You're going to see all sorts of individual families choose to take that. But the reality is that the schools can't reach out and the schools can't expand on after-school programs to give kids more of an opportunity to study more, for more individual time, and to be areas that are more free for schools to allow people into the schools after hours. As a physical structure, a school is ultimately a multi-purpose center, right? After we look at the school, a school can be used in many different ways. And I know for a fact some are used as churches on Sundays and so on and so forth. But the reality is we need to make our schools more accessible, we need to reduce any bureaucracy or any red tape in the way, so different community organizations and different groups can use the schools more frequently, more often, to build more of a community atmosphere all across our county.
Mr. Siegstock, are schools reaching out to churches and other centers of community to partner effectively?
Yes, and there needs to be more innovative principals, especially at our Title I schools, are reaching out and building relationships with local businesses to try to bring resources in and equalize that economic disparity that exists amongst our school groups. And I'm really excited about the robotics programs that we have in Prince William County in a day and age where we lament standardized testing and teaching to the SOLs. We have robotics programs that are teaching our kids to think critically, to work collaboratively, hands-on, to solve problems. We need more community partnerships. It's through partnerships that we build a stronger school system, and I will work to build on those partnerships. I agree that they need to happen at the school level, and I will do what I can to assist. Thank you.
Thank you, all three. Our second question of the evening, it goes to Ms. Conroy. Corey Stewart, chairman of the Prince William County Board of Supervisors, recently said, and I quote, "Don't let overcrowded schools fool you. We have great schools here in Prince William." Many have said families avoid moving to Prince William or out of Prince William due to crowded school conditions. So is the school board doing all it can, not only to reduce crowding, but also combat the negative image of overcrowded classrooms? You have three minutes.
Are we doing all we can? Obviously, reducing class size would be doing all we can, and that does require a prioritization. I don't believe that we have truly made that a priority here in Prince William County. Do I believe that people are not coming to Prince William County because of our class size? It definitely will have a factor. I think they're going to be even more concerned about our scores, which are falling behind. We have recently been passed by Stafford County in our scoring, SOLs and SATs. These types of things are detrimental to our county. When I move, when I buy a property, I look at the school's performance. It's one of the biggest factors in real estate. My husband and I are investors. We have purchased 35 homes here in Prince William County, so we always look at the schools. And I know that you, no matter where you live, whether you live on Route 1 or Route 15, you want the most value out of your home. And whether you live on Route 1 or Route 15, you want the best education your children can have. So no, I don't believe the schools have done enough. Our classrooms are too big. We can do better. Our teachers are feeling, their morale is at an all-time low, and they could do better if we invest more and we set those priorities with them. In my, okay, three minutes. There's other things, like class size reduction. If we're going to reduce class size, we need to have plans. We need a five-year plan that's developed by teachers, by educators, with parents involved, with the community involved. We've not done that. It's really very interesting to know that we stated this as a priority, but we've never set up a plan of action. So there again, I can't say that we've done everything we can do. With that, I'm going to go for the rest of my time.
Mr. Sawyers, are we doing everything that we can do to combat the negative image of overcrowded classrooms, crowded hallways, trailers? You have two minutes.
The short answer is no. No, we're not doing enough to combat the overcrowded classrooms and overcrowded trailers, and in fact, trailers just in general. The reality is Prince William County is still fighting the negativity of some local laws that were passed seven, eight years ago, and we still have to fight those problems as a county, which is much greater than our school system. I agree that we need to plan, but the reality is that there has been a plan, and it's been a bad one. And in fact, in one of your questionnaires, you answered that you thought that Prince William County school system planned well. I would strongly disagree. They didn't, they didn't plan well. They didn't plan well, they didn't execute well, and therefore, we find ourselves 10 to 12 schools short on where we need to be. The reality is that the Board of County Supervisors and the school board need to work better together in order to find the place, find the money, and find the infrastructure for the schools that we need. The school system simply can't build 10 to 12 schools or any combination of building schools and adding on to addition to already existing schools. We can't build the schools that we need based on the current revenue and the current way the Board of County Supervisors and the school board work together. We've got a better combined taxpayer resources, whether that be through land use, revenue sharing, money, it can all be done in different ways. We need to look to combine different ways, and the boards need to look at the revenue and the assets that the county has together collectively, as opposed to separately, and do things that are in the better interest of taxpayer money and taxpayer resources.
Mr. Siegstock?
If you please repeat your question.
Absolutely. Corey Stewart recently said, and I quote, "Don't let overcrowded schools fool you. We have great schools here in Prince William County." Many have said families are avoid moving to Prince William or out of Prince William due to crowded school conditions. Is the school board doing all it can to not only reduce crowding, but also combat the negative public image of overcrowded classrooms?
Okay, so let's start with the negative public image. Greatschools.org is some of the scientific websites, so it's kind of like the El Brangel's list of schools. And if you look at Prince William County schools' ratings with respect to our neighboring jurisdictions, we rate 6 out of 10, Fairfax and Loud rate 7 out of 10, Park here is Stafford, rate 6 out of 10, we're doing better than Manassas, we're doing better than Manassas City, we're doing better than, sorry, Manassas, we're doing better than Alexandria. So I would challenge the notion that there's a perception about Prince William County schools. We have a good school system with challenges that we need to overcome. We have a great school system with dedicated staff. We've got the robotics programs, we've got the specialty programs. On high school level, we've got a community that wants to engage Prince William County schools. But we have got to overcome our challenges with respect to crowding, treating our teachers, our educators like professionals they are, and maintaining a safe, healthy, and drug-free learning environment. Question specifically addressed crowding. I'm the only candidate to have an actual plan. I published it last spring. You can read about it online, but it starts with middle school. Our middle schoolers are facing the highest average class sizes in Prince William County. Prince William County has the highest average class sizes. And the Washington area Boards of Education, my plan will specifically bring down middle school class sizes from 31.5 to 26.5 as a five-phase plan. It empowers us to have a community dialogue about class size reduction. And furthermore, it empowers us to go to the Board of County Supervisors and ask for their help above and beyond the revenue sharing agreement so that we can address class sizes as a community.
Thank you very much. And go ahead and hold up your lights, I'll ask you the next question. Only because Mr. Sawyers brought up the revenue sharing agreement, so now I need to ask. Is the revenue sharing agreement where Prince William County automatically gives 57% of its budget automatically to the school division, does that still work?
The revenue sharing agreement is a policy tool. And for me, it's not a philosophical point of view. It's simply a policy tool that was developed to fund our school systems. Does it adequately fund the school system? No. And if you look at the magnitude of our crowding issue and the fact that we have an overworked and underpaid workforce, it's not adequately funding our school system. It has benefits, but the benefits are also the drawbacks. One benefit is that it reduces some of the public acrimony associated with public budgeting. We don't have firefighters advocating against educators for public funding, but that is the democratic process. And it prevents us from being able to put school priorities up against other county priorities, for example, class size reduction, which is why I'm excited to have a plan out there that we can take with Board of County Supervisors. Secondly, it provides a dedicated funding stream to the school system, so there's some predictability for the school board to plan in the future, but as I mentioned earlier, it doesn't adequately fund the school system. I don't think it's a responsible position to simply do away with the revenue sharing agreement. I think we need to build on it. It's going to take time, it's going to require leadership, it's going to require putting forth concrete plans like my five-phase class size reduction plan. Thank you.
Ms. Conroy, you have two minutes. Does this revenue sharing agreement work?
The revenue sharing agreement is not a cap. It's not necessarily the most that the school board could ask. It does make it predictable. The Board of County Supervisor produces a five-year plan, and of that plan, we expect the school board to receive 57.23% of the general funds. This allows the school board to not only budget this year, but try to budget out the next five years. If the school board were to come to the Board of County Supervisors and advocate for a need that is greater than that, they can do that, they're not limited. I don't know that RSA is working today. It does make the debates a little bit less contentious, but it's also, you see, there's a lot of apathy in our county where we're not coming out and participating. I don't believe the school board has been very transparent with their budget. I believe they would do better if RSA was not in place. And Uriah, if there's a chance, I'd like to address, I did say that the school board planned very well. In 2005, our school board projected the number of students, and they were accurate to what we have today. They also projected, they also planned for schools to be built. Those schools were not built. They planned well, they did not implement. They also predicted how much schools would cost. They predicted the 13th high school would cost $60 million to open this past September. It didn't open this past September. It's opening five years from now, and it costs $120 million, 50% higher. So yes, you did plan well, we didn't implement.
Well, I think I've made it clear that my stance on the revenue sharing agreement is that it needs to at least be a floor and not a ceiling, and it needs to go away. And I'm excited to hear, we've been leading on this issue, issue, excuse me, along with candidate Rick Smith for the Board of County Supervisors, who's running against Corey Stewart. We've both run on this issue, and I'm excited to see both of my opponents follow my lead on the issue, that the revenue sharing agreement needs to go away, and we need to have the ability to negotiate the amount of funds that go into our school system, just like every other local body of government has to do. Our needs change, revenues need to go up, student enrollment is going up, and it needs to stay in relation to, not only to inflation, but to the number of students who are coming in. So no, the revenue sharing agreement is not enough because it doesn't allow the detailed conversations to happen that we need to have. Sure, it makes budget season even more contentious than when it does, but it forces the Board of County Supervisors and it forces the school board to have a realistic conversation on what is needed for our school system. And currently, that conversation doesn't take place. They throw around a little bit of extra money here and there to make it look like they're making a difference, but the five-year plan that the Board of County Supervisors puts together with six Republicans and two Democrats, it's thrown out the window every single year when the two most conservative members of the Board of County Supervisors want to throw it out and say, "Plans are plans, the plans are meant to be changed." So every year, the five-year plan ends up being no good because they want to throw it out every year and renegotiate. So yes, in theory, it would work if we didn't throw out the revenues, if we didn't throw out the five-year plan every single budget season, because it's not convenient for some of the political motivations, especially on the side of the Board of County Supervisors.
Okay, thank you very much. Third question is for you, Mr. Sawyers. What is your blueprint for reducing class size?
Can I just replay back what I just said? Is that cool? No. The reality is, everything starts, anybody's ideas, whether they be Mr. Siegstock's, Ms. Conroy's, or mine, anybody's ideas are going to start with funding. So you can talk about reprioritization, reprioritization of your ideas, you can talk about those things if you want, but if you reprioritize, that means something else is going to get cut, something else that your family may use, something else that your neighbor's family may need, and without additional revenue, when you reprioritize, something has to go. So the reality is, when it comes to making top priorities, class size reduction and changing the revenue share agreement are absolutely my first two priorities. We cannot reduce class sizes without additional funding in our school system and without doubling or tripling the unsecured trailers that we have throughout this county. We're building some of the nicest schools, some of the biggest schools in Northern Virginia, and they're ultimately immediately being surrounded by trailers because we can't keep up with the growth. The Board of County Supervisors is the only one that can be blamed for the overcrowding in Prince William County. Richmond didn't build the houses, President Obama didn't build the houses, and the school board... Board didn't build the houses. The Board of County Supervisors built them and continues to act surprised that families like ours moved into them with children who want to go to public school. The reality is, they can't do that anymore. We have to find a way to put our kids into brick-and-mortar, secure classrooms with well-compensated teachers, which is the third priority I was going to bring up. We want to be able to keep our teachers around. They, they, we don't want to be a training ground for, for Fairfax County and Stafford County when it comes to the best teachers. The reality is, is that nationwide, 75% of teachers are female, and I believe in Prince William County, we're roughly around 80%, if not more. I know my kid's elementary school that they went to last year had two male teachers in the entire school building. So the reality is, we need to do things that are more attractive and, and, and draw in teachers who are most likely female, and we can attract them in different ways, and that's why I bring up the idea of paid maternity leave. It's just to start a conversation no one else was talking about, or at least no one else was talking about until I brought it up, right? The reality is, those types of things are type, are ideas that we should discuss, whether we can afford it or not, we'll figure that out, but those are the types of ideas we can discuss. I'm a successful business owner, I look at things methodically a lot of times, and this is very much a marketing decision. Teachers, 80% of them, are women. We should be making school teaching jobs more attractive to young professionals, so when, when job openings do open up within our school system, we have the ability to attract the best teachers and then keep them here, so we can have the best school system and a world-class school system for our children.
Ms. Conroy, it's a big topic, do you want three minutes?
Yes, please.
Okay, three minutes.
The RSA, just, I'm actually not following Ryan's lead on this one. In March, I, I had an article, I believe it was in your paper, where I stood against the RSA, so I made that very clear back then. Just to let you know, my reason for elimination of the RSA is because we've not been transparent enough. And to say that priorities are not important, in your household, you pay your mortgage first, then your utilities, your food, before you go out and buy a new car. Priorities are important. I was speaking to a lady in the audience with a child with a special education need. This year, we spent less money on special education students, I mean money, actual dollar amount than we did in 2007. We have cuts for mostly women. I would have loved 12 weeks vacation, but my employers could not have covered my shift for 12 weeks and still been able to pay their bills. Right now, Prince William County offers teachers and spouses of teachers up to 60 days sick leave for pregnancy, and another 45 days from paid sick bank. That's a total of 105 days. That's a lot, and I'm telling you, I know there are countries that provide two years. Wouldn't that be awesome to stay home with their kids for two years? I could have that discussion with you, and I could say priorities don't matter, and I'm thinking big, and let's go for that, but I'm going to take the conversation away from the other things. Your education. Your education is what I want to talk about today, and we'll talk about what we can provide. Prince William Education Association, the Federation of Teachers, our School Board, our state, has never identified maternity leave expansion as their priority. If it is, I'm going to fight for it, because I'm going to fight for what you want, because that's why you're electing me to represent you. But today, I meet all my teachers class size. Pay more time with the children, and the ability to reach our children, they care about our children. What they want most is provide them a wonderful education. Thank you.
Mr. Singstock, I'll give you three minutes as well, and use class size.
Thank you. It's very important that we reduce class sizes here in Prince William County. Prince William County has the largest average class sizes in the Washington area Boards of Education. Our middle schoolers are facing the largest average class sizes in Prince William County. The average middle school class size is 31.5. It is a large structural challenge. As an officer in the United States Army, I learned that when you have to confront a large problem, you need to break it up into smaller problems. I want to start with middle school, that's where the problem is most acute, and that's why I published a five-phase plan. It will cost $1.4 million to do a class size reduction of one child per classroom across an entire grade level. So all three years of middle school to go from 31.5 to 26.5, which I understand that's not setting the world on fire, but it at least starts moving us in the right direction. This is the beginning of class size reduction here in Prince William County. Will cost $21 million. How can you make a determination between two products if there's no price tag attached to them? How can we, as a community, have a debate about class size reduction in any other program in Prince William County schools, or any other program in Prince William County? If we don't have a price tag on those programs, we need to move beyond the philosophical debate and start having a concrete debate. And I believe that this plan empowers us as a School Board, when we start building schools that look like Battlefield and Hilton, to go back to the Board of County Supervisors and say, "Look, we've implemented phase one and two of our class size reduction for middle schoolers, we need help with phase three, we need help with phase four." And that empowers the Board of County Supervisors now to balance class size reduction with their priorities. We are only going to solve this challenge if we work together as a community, the School Board and the Board of County Supervisors, together govern Prince William County. Together, we're going to come, we're going to come out of this problem. Together, we're going to develop solutions to the challenge of class size. It's my number one priority, and I'm glad we had an opportunity to talk about it tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Sawyers. But I will give three minutes to each of you for this question, and I'm changing the rules, I'm using the moderator's discretion to give that on that. But this question first goes to Ms. Conroy. What is your position on universal pre-K?
You know, I was at a School Board meeting when the group Voice came. I didn't know they were working behind the scenes to bring in preschool initiative, BPI+ is what it was called. Currently, in Prince William County, we leave a lot of money on the table, I believe it is $6 million to maybe $8 million, but I'm going to go with the less, I'm going to tell you, it's $6 million. $6 million, all we have to do is provide $3 million to get that money to bring our students that are economically disadvantaged into a preschool classroom. I believe that we invest in our children. I was blessed, I could take my child to preschool. He had a learning delay, and preschool meant the world. It got him to almost talk to people. That took a few, four years. But our students benefit from this, I believe in preschool initiative. BPI+, what the difference was, we didn't have to match it at all, and that's why we have more seats today for these children that are growing up in households that have less than a lot of us do. They're not only getting an education, they're getting fed breakfast and lunch. I don't know, I just think our children are the priority in life, and I believe this really does make a difference in their life. So to answer that, universal, we have a ton of children that are waiting for child find services. We have so many kids on that list that could benefit, Uriah, and I would like to do it. I believe it will pay off. I believe that these students will need less services as they enter the later years of school. If we have an opportunity to reach a student early, pre-K. We talked about class size reduction. Most teachers, every teacher I know tells me K to read, that's where they want the class size reduction. We have to get these kids reading. I have not had a teacher tell me they saw a middle school being the place where they need a reduction, they would like it, but if they can only have it in one area, they want it down at that K to read level. They know they need to reach these kids young, they know they have a window of opportunity to make a difference in a child's life. My plan on reduction, what about what the teachers are saying? I believe that we need to listen to teachers. When we talk about disrespecting teachers, when you come up with a reduction plan that does not involve the people that are working with our children, they feel disrespected. And I will bring them in before I make a plan, because it will be their plan, not my plan. It will be the people in the classroom, the parents, the stakeholders of Prince William County, that will develop the proper plan.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyers.
Especially when it comes, excuse me, especially when it comes to economically disadvantaged families, pre-K is even more important, kind of tying back to the original question that we started off with. The reality is, is that economically disadvantaged families need more help along the way, those children need more help getting their feet off the ground when it comes to education. We absolutely can't be leaving money in Richmond when it comes to simple managing money that we can be putting in. Again, where do we find that without additional revenue? That's going to be tough to say. We simply can't be walking around the Kelly Leadership Center and find the money that everybody's, everybody's asking for, the $21 million for, for middle school reduction, that's not going to be found walking around the Kelly Leadership Center, removing a few duplicate jobs, and making sure they charge more for cafeteria lunch. That's not going to happen, we're not going to find the money that way. We ultimately need to renegotiate that when it comes to, when it comes to funding for our schools. Pre-K goes along with the kind of upside-down model that we're looking at. The reality is, studies show, have shown for a long time, that more money in class size is more important at the elementary school level than it is at the middle school and high school level. Once students are given a good base, and especially economically disadvantaged families at the pre-K level, once they're given a good base for education, class sizes are shown to be more acceptable, to be a little larger as students get older. That's why Mr. Singstock's plan to reduce middle school class sizes doesn't really make any sense from an educational model. It may be a simpler model for him, but I absolutely disagree, because the reality is, not only has there not been any viable plan to say where we're going to find the $21 million, but it actually doesn't fit any educational models, and to say as students get older with a good base at the pre-K and younger levels, they can move forward, and actually, we can, we can afford to have slightly larger class sizes as they get older, because the, their feet are on solid ground when it comes to education, when it comes to where they need to be as far as their learning environment. So the reality is that the earlier we can get families involved in pre-K, the earlier we can help not only the students, but the families out in a pre-K atmosphere, the better off all of us are going to be, and we need to make sure we look at the bigger picture and not just the smaller picture that's always in front of us.
And I imagine Mr. Singstock wants to answer that, that question, for a whole three minutes?
For a whole three minutes. Universal pre-K is important because we need to make sure that everyone who's starting kindergarten is starting at the same level, and not everyone has parents who can teach their kids to read and do arithmetic before they enter kindergarten. So I definitely understand the value in it. We are talking about funding here tonight, and it's very difficult to get funding for public education, I think we all understand that, and when we're faced with challenges such as class size reduction and getting more competitive pay to our educators, it presents a challenge to add universal pre-K on to those challenges that we're already facing. It's difficult to get the money to fix the problems that we have. And I was also in the Board meeting when the Board voted 8-0 to approve the BPI-plus program, and I think as long as it's blunted and rated as a public-private partnership, it's a good idea. My concerns are that the $4.1, $4.2 million sunsets after four years, and then we're going to have to fund the continuation of that program, which averages to about $17,000 per child. We're spending about $10,500 per child in our public education system right now. And additionally, we have schools that are over capacity, so I would be concerned about bringing additional pupils into schools that are already over capacity. The absolute importance to reduce class size at our middle school level, our middle schoolers, young people are facing the three most challenging years of their lives. That is where the problem is most acute, the average class size is 31.5. If we want to reduce high school dropout rates, we have to reduce middle school class sizes. If we want to improve teacher morale and keep our educators here in Prince William County, we need to reduce middle school class sizes, so our educators are spending more time teaching and less time managing behavior. Thank you.
And with that, we're going to take a brief pause to tell you that the Legal Limiting Voters is holding a voter registration into that, so if you are not registered to vote, please see the Legal Limiting Voters. There will also be a prayer service, upcoming club service at 7:49. So we will take a brief pause for now, please, so please, just stretch a bit, and we will come back in about 10 minutes? 10? Three minutes? And how long should we recess for? Three minutes? Okay, three minutes, so we'll be right back in three minutes. And Ms. Conroy, hopefully will join us there very shortly. Okay, the question I will direct to Ms. Sawyers, and I will repeat for Ms. Conroy when she returns. I apologize, Sawyers, Conroy, I apologize.
Sometimes we get them mixed up too, right?
All right, Mr. Sawyers. Prince William County will open one of the most expensive high schools ever built in Virginia, a little under a year from now, on Route 234, very close to here. The Division is now seeking input on the design of a new high school that will open somewhere in Briscoe in 2020. A modified, older design based off Freedom High School's floor plan is cheaper to build, while the more expensive design modeled after Patriot High School is more costly and is favored by some parents. The question is, do we need more expensive buildings to provide a better world-class education?
Well, this is, this is a nuanced conversation that obviously, I know a lot of people believe strongly in one way or the other when it comes to the cost of our schools. The reality is, when it comes to building schools, a few years from now, somewhere in this state, someone's going to build the most expensive school in the state, and then a few years after that, someone's going to build the most expensive school in the state. That's just economics, that's how inflation works, that's how growth works, is that eventually the next school is going to be surpassed. Before this school was built, before Colgan High School was built, a previous school was the most expensive school in the state. So that's going to constantly change as we move forward. Going on, briefly talking about Colgan, and when it comes to, I know one of the big controversial issues was, was the pool being included with that. I think this is a prime example of the two boards not working very well together. The School Board wasn't very transparent in its matter of, in, in trying to implement a pool at the, at the high school, and the Board of County Supervisors wasn't necessarily very willing to go along with the idea that the Department of Parks and Recreation, which is under the Board of County Supervisors, maybe should have paid for that school, or excuse me, for the pool, it'd be nice if they paid for the school too. But the reality is, is we need to work to combine those efforts. If we needed a pool, then that's okay, because there's 16 elected officials in our county that are on both boards, ultimately could have come together and figured out a way to combine resources, combine revenues, combine land, and have a Board of County Supervisors-funded pool at a school, at a school site, and that would be a better use of taxpayer resources. When we look at which building we're going to design, which, living on the western end like I do, they, they refer to it as the Patriot model, the Battlefield model, I know Freedom is done in there as well. If they both host the same, or they both can hold the same amount of students, but Patriot has some advantages, like larger hallways, better lighting, those types of things. If we focus on the now, and we have these conversations about what's in front of us right now, we tend to fall into the same problems that we've always fell into in Prince William County, which is not looking further down the road, right? I grew up, my dad's an outdoor writer, and he grew up teaching me how to fish, right? And I remember as a kid, he'd always make me fish for the bigger fish, and I had to wait and watch the bobber and the whole nine yards, but he always brought me a smaller rod, so I could catch a bluegill in front of me, right? So there's always, there's some short-term goals, and there's some, that's kind of a, kind of an Appalachia thing to use as an analogy, but it works for me, trust me, right? The, the reality is that we have short-term problems, but we also can't cut our nose off in spite of our face because of short-term problems. And the benefits to a, to a, to a, quote, more expensive high school like the Patriot model, is that it's easier to add on to in the future, when we do need to expand class sizes even more, because of things like larger hallways, larger cafeterias, better lighting for educational purposes, those types of things, there are some benefits. So if we just only consider short-term factors when we build schools, our growth is continued to, we're continuing, we're, we're planning to continue to grow and grow and grow in this county, and we need to make sure that we just don't look at the future, at the current problems, but also predict a little bit for the larger problems down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Singstock. As Mr. Sawyers pointed out, natural lighting, wider hallways, has been part of this conversation about what we're, how we're going to build new high schools. Ms. Lily Jessi pointed out at this recent School Board meeting that Oswald Park and Battlefield are nationally ranked schools, they don't have as many windows. So the question again, do we need better school buildings, bigger school buildings for a world classification?
Very happy to field this question. Thank you very much. The Board made the decision in 2014 to go with the Battlefield model. For those of you who haven't been out to see Battlefield, it's identical to Hilton, it's identical to Forest Park, it's identical to Freedom. Those models work well for Prince William County. They have the exact same capacity. They have the exact same capacity as the Patriot model, 2,000 students. If you need to buy a seven-passenger minivan and you're looking at an $18,000 model and a $20,000 model, if you're fiscally responsible, you're going to go with the $18,000 model. Why? Because you're going to have lower car payments in the future. If we choose more fiscally responsible schools, we are going to have lower debt servicing payments in the out-years. Less debt servicing costs equates to more money available for class size reduction and competitive teacher pay. I absolutely unequivocally advocate for the Battlefield model. I unequivocally advocate for the Battlefield model. That's how we're going to move forward in Prince William County if I am your school board chairman. Back to making fiscally responsible decisions and transparency, I also question why we're even having this debate when the school board did vote on this decision back in 2014. The administration in a town hall at Patriot High School presented a very biased presentation that somehow more light, larger classrooms and bigger hallways are going to equate to a better education. I will tell you that I'm not concerned with windows. I'm not concerned with courtyards. My concern is whether or not the kids in that high school know how to use the Pythagorean theorem and write five-paragraph S A.
Ms. Conroy, make your school better education. Does it go out?
I do know a little bit about the pool. Our pool does exist. We're going to enjoy that pool, but I was opposed to the pool. I spent a great part of nine months advocating for the school board to go without the pool. I attended the joint board meetings where the school was asking the Board of County Supervisors if they would fund the pool and operate it. Marty Dewey pointed out that there was a private partnership being offered by Northern Virginia Community College in Woodbridge. And if the board were going to put money into a pool, he would think that that possibly was a better investment for our Board of County Supervisors. So, the interest in operating the pool from the V O S C S was actually never there. I had some real issues and will hopefully pan them out. I don't like the thought of strangers entering our school grounds, being there at all different hours to go swimming. Our schools have essentially lost control. They're parking a lot now because anybody can come onto the grounds to go swimming. It's questionable to me whether the pool will be open to the public during the school day. One of the things that we advocated was that, one of the things that certain board members were saying was that we would use the pool for special education students. At one time, there was a pool in Independent Hill School where our special education students were housed. That pool was infiltrated in because of risk management issues. We were concerned about special education students being in a pool. A teacher arranged for those students then go to one of our rec centers that free bus transportation. That was eventually denied too because we were concerned about the risk of paying special education students in a pool. Our special education students don't have enough teachers in their classroom. They don't have enough teacher things in their classroom. Some of our students would require three or four or even five people to help change them and put them into a pool, but we claim this was for special education. I hope that our students will have the privacy needed to actually go in that pool. Some of our students have incontinence issues and are going to have to be put in that pool because we promised them. I hope that we do that. I hope our pools have a positive cash flow. However, all the models don't. None of our rec pools have a positive cash flow. They're all on the hole. Arlington has pools and they have never been able to cover the operating costs. We just hired a pool director at $168,000 a year to run the pool, and we have not even gone in to the lifeguards. We cannot afford the luxuries when we're not meeting the needs. And that's why I did advocate in March of 2014 for the Battlefield model. I felt that we actually made a very good decision, and I very assert that the administration has decided to bring it back up.
Thank you, Ms. Conroy. We'll move on. The next question is for Mr. Singstock. You have three minutes. Prince William County is lagging behind other localities ranked by the Washington Area Board of Education. We're even behind City of Manassas in teacher school teacher pay. That coupled with this area being a very expensive area to raise a family and live, what will you do to not only improve teacher pay, but help retain qualified, quality teachers in Prince William County?
Okay, so competitive teacher pay and treating educators like the professionals they are at the second plank of my platform. When a teacher stays beyond three years, it's clear that public education is going to be that individual's career. We want those people to have their career here in Prince William County. My older siblings and I had the same teachers at the Sullivan High School. Today, my kids going through Prince William County schools have had the same teachers. So, that's a benefit that my family enjoyed, and I want other families to have that same benefit. But the operative word here is retention. We are losing people, good people, to Loudon and Fairfax because Loudon and Fairfax can offer more money. Loudon and Fairfax have more diverse tax bases. They can spend $15,000 and up for students. We're spending $10,500. We have got to get more competitive pay to our educators, especially towards the bottom end of the pay scale. If you really dig into the numbers at the high end of the pay scale, Prince William County is very competitive, but not at the lower end, not at all. And so, we need to look at a step increase. We need to look at COCA, the Cost of Competing Adjustment, which is money that comes from the state of Virginia for jurisdictions that are higher cost of living. It provides additional funds to hire not just teachers, but anyone who works in the school system. So, we need to partner with our delegation in Richmond, and we need to work together with the Board of County Supervisors, and we need to get more competitive pay to our teachers so that they will make the commitment to stay here and have their career here in Prince William County, and other families can have the same benefit that my family have.
Could you please say the question? Sure. The, Prince William County is lagging behind places like Manassas City in teacher pay as based on judging other jurisdictions in the Washington area. So, what will you do as school board chair to not only address the teacher pay issue, but also retain high-quality teachers to stay in the area as it is a very expensive area to raise pay?
You know, I do think we need to look to Richmond. I mean, that was a question asked out in the audience, and yes, we do need to say, Rich, we need to go to the state level too. A lot of our cuts that we do see in some of the areas I'm interested in have come as a result of these federal cuts, and we've had to decide whether we're going to backfill those or not. And again, that would be priorities. We do have needs here at Prince William County. One of the things that I find very interesting is the amount of money that makes it to our classrooms. Here at Prince William County, only about 66% of the money that goes to the school division ever makes it to our classrooms. That is about 5% to 6% less than what Fairfax, the money portion that gets to Fairfax. In a $1.39 million budget, 5% is a lot of money. This is where we have to make sure our money's going to the classroom. Our teachers are leaving, but not only are they leaving, their morale is low. Some of them are reaching the point where they're saying, "I can't pay more. This is my last year," or "I'm retiring early," or "I just don't know if I care anymore. All I do is paperwork. I don't get to spend time with the children anymore." That's why people leave. As a nurse, I don't need the nursing profession because I don't make enough money. Teachers don't leave teaching because of the money. They need the money, believe me. They leave because they're not feeling satisfied at the end of the day. They're not feeling respected. One thing that Stafford did in the lower levels is they did a multiple-step jump for the teachers that are less than five years. A two-to-three-step jump in one year to help these teachers catch up where they expected to be. When they're hired, they're told each year, "You're going to get a step and you're going to be at this level." Some of their peers elsewhere are a five-year teacher. They may be at a step five elsewhere, but only at a step two here in Prince William County. This is why they leave. When someone outside the county comes and gets hired here in Prince William County, often they're at a higher step than someone who's already been here longer in Prince William County. We need to look at leveling that out. Stafford did that this past year, and they did it without raising taxes, by the way. As far as taxes go, we'll probably raise them. We have to probably raise them. We're always going to have more needs. Let's fund the needs first. I'll tell you what else we can have. I'll show you all the things we can have if you can afford it, and then you can make the decision of how much you can bear, how much you can give of your tax dollars. But they're your money. It's your money, it's not mine. Thank you.
Excuse me. One of the first things that we can do, as I referenced earlier, is when it comes to budget season, we can stop throwing out the five-year plan, the plan that we've done through bipartisan citizen efforts that have called for different revenue streams throughout the county. We can stop throwing that out every year and throwing the entire county budget into disarray for political reasons. I think one of the things that the school board chairman needs to do is be the chief advocate for the school system. And that means maybe being the ninth person at the Board of County Supervisors meeting where ultimately all the funding is going, all the flexible funding that we have the most immediate control over is going to be dictated. We need to spend time with the Board of County Supervisors and make sure that they follow the current five-year plan in order to better fund our schools along the way. I've mentioned a bunch now, and I'll say it again, that the revenue sharing agreement ultimately needs to go away so we can negotiate for better pay for our teachers, reduce class sizes, and those types of things. When it comes to teacher pay, teacher morale, one of the things that we can do that doesn't cost a whole lot of money is we can change the culture within our school system. We need to ultimately understand who serves who when it comes to any business. As a small business owner, I understand that the more that I serve the people that are below me on the organizational chart, the better the organizational chart is, the better the business flows. The reality is when you walk into a high school building, everybody knows, everybody who works there knows who the principal is. That elementary school, middle school, doesn't matter. Everybody knows who the principal is. Nobody needs to be reminded who's in charge at a particular school. But the reality is, good leaders serve those who work beneath them on the organizational chart so they can do their job better. Right now, site-based management has become a very wasteful exercise. I know, Mr. Singstock, you promoted in 2003 very heavily in your campaign, but site-based management, it has been a waste when it comes, has been turned into a site-based waste. There are simply too many chefs in the kitchen when it comes to the budgets that we have with our 90-plus schools, and too many people have a say in how money is being spent, and it's not being focused on the bigger priorities that we agree on as a school board, we agree on as Board of County Supervisors, or we agree on as citizens who put our voices into the process. The reality is, is that we, the principals at schools can't have as much say in the current process because too much money is wasted and too many priorities aren't followed because there's too many chefs in the kitchen when it comes to how the money is spent with site-based management. And that's one of the things that we can do that doesn't cost a lot of money, that doesn't change the revenue sharing agreement, and doesn't raise taxes, because we just need to change the culture in the schools and who is ultimately held accountable for the appropriate spending and the usefulness of every dollar that comes into the school system.
I'm going to ask a follow-up question to that. I'll give each one minute to respond, and we'll go the same way we just did, sorry to Mr. Singstock. This past week, as we heard the school board debate whether or not they're going to, you know, whether they would reset their vote on the Battlefield model or their Patriot model, how much money were they going to spend for a new school? The school board chairman, Mel Johns, said, "We hate people to do this, that we hate people to advise us on these types of decisions and what's best." You say that it was a biased presentation that they came and made to the community, which I'm assuming that presentation through you raised advocated for that more expensive Patriot model. Would I be correct in saying that? So, is there a need for changes at the county schools administration building? Would you clean house, as they say, to find people who might go out and give biased presentations?
Certainly not a loaded question. We are going to have at least three new members on the Prince William County School Board starting on January 1st. The board is going to be moving in a new direction because it's going to have new leadership. The administration in Independent Hill can move in that new direction with us, or they can move on. It's not, it's just simple mathematics. New leadership moving in a new direction. You're going to elect new leadership on November 3rd, so let's talk about leadership. You need leadership on the school board. You need leadership as chairman. I've chaired the Prince William County State School Advisory Council, so I've run public meetings with school division staff and parents at the Kelly Leadership Center for an entire school year. I served as an officer in the United States Army, and I've run IT projects as a certified project management professional managing multimillion-dollar budgets. We always stayed on target. We always stayed on schedule. We always stayed on budget. So, that's the kind of leadership that I'm going to work through the school board next year.
The question pretty much stems from, again, the discussion about building the new high school, the Battlefield model versus the Patriot model. As we listened to Chairman Mel Johns at Wednesday's school board meeting, he said that, you know, the school division employs people to advise the board of these types of decisions and what decisions would best for the community, for the school, for the teacher.
I'm good. Distraction, that's what I'm going to call it. Right now, we have so many important things to talk about in education, and we're talking about a model that was already voted for. We brought citizens together and we basically told them, "You have a choice in the prototype." Well, you really had that choice, but it wasn't 2014. We do a lot of distracting. The pool, I was distracted. I advocated against the pool, and I came to learn that I'm not, we were talking about education for about nine months. We were talking about a pool. We need to stop the distractions. Talk about education. Focus. Education. That is what we need to focus on.
When it comes to leadership, I will evaluate anyone in the Kelly Leadership Center. The reality is that the school board only hires five or one employee, and I will evaluate that employee based on how they work under my leadership and not how they work under anyone else's. Sometimes changing, changing the leader of the leader is enough and sometimes it's not, and I will evaluate under that. I think when it comes to this conversation, the part that scares me the most is whether or not you're for the Battlefield model or you're for the Patriot model. The thing that scares me about both of my opponents' opinion on this is the fact that their unwillingness to even say something should be reconsidered just because minds are changed. We have the ability to change our constitution, but for some reason, they don't think we should rethink any board decisions of the school board at a local level. The reality is opinion changes, information changes. That's why we don't teach that the world is flat anymore because we have more knowledge going down the future. So, the board always has the ability to change any previous decision. Knowledge is power, and when knowledge changes, when information changes, boards will certainly review how they do it, whether or not, not even on this particular issue, but that scares me if you were to make a bad decision and you refuse to review it simply because you already made that decision, and that's intimidating to me.
Thank you. I'll give both the new and opportunity to rebut that statement. If you want to, if not, we'll watch. Okay.
Certainly, the board can revisit decisions that it's made in the past, but this was a good decision. The Battlefield model is the right model for Prince William County. We borrow to build, and when we build a cheaper school, we have less debt servicing costs in future years, which means more funding in the operating budget to go towards class size reduction and competitive teacher pay, which are two of my top three priorities. I will advocate for less expensive schools, especially when they have the exact same capacity. I'm not impressed with glass windows and courtyards. I want to know that the kids inside that school know how to do math and write a five-paragraph S A.
I believe we do revisit things when we made a mistake. My concern is the school board did not say we wish to revisit this. The administration decided that they would revisit it, and they did present a view that was their own. The Patriot model has been costing much more to heat and cool. The teachers are putting the blinds down because of the glare. The kids cannot see because of the sun in their eyes. It's colder in the window because of wall of glass does that. It's hotter in the summer because, again, a wall of glass does that. Our teachers want time with the students. They don't, they might love more windows, but they want to focus on our kids. They want class size reduction. They, award-winning schools are wonderful, but we want award-winning students. This is about education, not architecture.
Thank you very much. Next question is for Mr. Sawyer's. And I'll personalize it because I can attest to, when I was in Prince William County schools, I mean, the goal was to teach children to graduate and go on to a four-year university. That was the goal. Should we... Should we continue to be teaching students in that direction with the thought that they're all going to go to a four-year university? What, you know, what do you say about that?
A lot, actually. I say a lot about that. As I mentioned earlier, or in my bio, you know, I was in the college baseball profession for fifteen years, didn't get into it on purpose, got into it accidentally, ended up being what I do. So I spent a lot of time, not just with college students, but with the sixteen- and seventy-year-olds working their way into college, teaching them about the process, helping them understand the different classes they need to take in order to be eligible to get into college and ultimately play college athletics. But the reality is, is that college isn't for everyone. First of all, it's ridiculously expensive. The college bubble is eventually going to have to burst, and college is getting out of control and is simply not within reach of many families. I coached at Purdue University for four seasons. My parents, with a seventy-five percent scholarship, my parents wouldn't have been able to afford to send me to Purdue University in Patriot, meaning twenty-five percent out of cost, out of state cost. It simply wasn't the case. They didn't have the ability to do that. So college not only needs to become more affordable, which is done more at a national level and certainly outside of the realm of the school board, but the reality is, is that we need to, we need to prepare students for the workforce, which is ultimately what college is just a delay in between anyway. Everyone ultimately enters the workforce, it's just a matter of when. And so we need to have more collaborative efforts with our local community colleges, and being a community college attendee myself, I ended up not earning my associate's degree, I ended up just going straight to my bachelor's degree. But the reality is, is I'm proud to have attended the community college. My older brother attended community college as well. But we need to help people prepare for the workforce, whatever they think it may be. That could be a four- or seven-year hiatus in college, depending on what they want to do, or they could be going straight to the workforce out of high school. And with more technical programs, more advanced programs, then we need to do that with community efforts. Where I'm from in western Maryland, we had one vocational technical school that everybody ultimately went to. You can do that in the rural part of the world and have one school. The reality is, the commute in Prince William County would make that impossible, to get bused to your home school and then bussed back to your technical school along the way, and everybody to one spot. So we need to work collaboratively with not only private organizations, but also with community colleges to make sure that students have more, more opportunities available to them so they can either become prepared to enter into college, or they need, or they need to be prepared to enter the workforce soon after high school and get ready for an apprenticeship. So we absolutely need to do more to prepare kids for the workforce, regardless if that's college or straight into the workforce out of high school.
Thank you, Ms. Conroy. Should we still be teaching children that a four-year, a four-year university is the key, is the way to go? Are there other options?
There was actually a time when we used to have a PhD in technical schools, and we moved away from them largely as a nation where we decided everybody would go to college. Prince William County is considered one of the most educated counties in the, in the United States, and we are thirty-seven percent college graduates. Yet we have a goal that ninety-two percent of our students will attend college. The reality is, most of them will not actually earn that. If we reach fifty percent, we will be rock stars in this nation, okay? We need to be concerned about what our kids are doing when they graduate. We have become collectors of data. We are collecting how many kids graduate, but we're not collecting how many are employed after graduation. Many kids know early on that it's not their gift. There are some students that are stressed out because they only have a four-point-oh, and they may not get into college, they think. What do you think a child who has a two-point-five believes their future is in Prince William County? My husband didn't attend college. He has not won college credit, but he bought his first home at twenty-one. I'm really proud of him. When the market crashed, we had five homes here in Prince William County. We sold some of the lots, but we kept going. That's what you do. When you know how to work, that's what you do. And yet, when my son was in seventh grade, he was told if he doesn't go to college, he'll never make more than twenty-five thousand a year. He came home and asked my husband, "Dad, what do you make?" We have a successful business. There are other ways to be successful in life, and we are ripping these kids off, I tell them or not. We have a school for the severely handicapped called Independent Hill School. It's at one location. We manage to get every child there. We could open one vocational school, a high-tech vocational educational school where students can try different career paths, and they can come out with certifications, and they can be employable. HVAC techs are being hired at forty-five thousand a year at eighteen. Welders are making forty-five, fifty thousand at eighteen. We can do this for our kids, and yet we're telling them, "There's only one path, and if you don't fit into that model, you will never achieve." That is ripping our children off, and that is going to hurt us in the future. We need to give different students different options, and we have to make sure they have an avenue to success. So I am very much for a vocational technical school.
Mr. Singstock.
I'm very happy that we're having this conversation. I think as a community and as a nation, we need to move beyond the everybody must go to college ideal. There is a world of career opportunities between high school and college. With the grades I had in high school, I never would have been able to get into Virginia Tech today. It's just entirely too competitive. But if you do have a two-point-nine, you do have an opportunity to someday be chairman of the Prince William County School Board. I'll just throw that out there. But I was able to go to Virginia Tech. I was able to get a master's in public administration. There is a world of opportunities, folks. We've got employers right here in Prince William County. I spoke to a very large employer, and they don't have a shortage of employees who have four-year degrees. They have a shortage finding employees who have technical degrees between high school and college. We need to look at career and technical education. We need to look at preparing our kids to go into the workforce right out of high school. We need to continue to build on our partnership with Northern Virginia Community College. Not everyone needs to go to a four-year school. Not everyone can afford it. Not everyone can make it into a four-year college. We need to show our kids that there are opportunities for them beyond high school, but less than college. Opportunities right here in Prince William County. There are job creators who are ready to hire those kids. Let's start preparing them to work here in Prince William County so we can build our economy and build our tax base.
Thank you, Mr. Singstock. With that, that ends our round of questioning. We now move into closing statements. All three of you, each of you will have three minutes to give us a closing statement, and we'll begin with Mr. Sawyers.
Well, first of all, again, thank you for hosting us. This has been a wonderful event. I always enjoy good, open, honest discussion. We obviously weren't going to sit down and agree on everything, and that's kind of the point, isn't it, that we ultimately figure out where everybody stands? I'm proud of, I'm proud of not only the adult or the person that I've become compared to where I began, but also proud of the family that I'm raising and proud of my humble beginnings. Like, I think I mentioned earlier, you know, my dad is a small-town newspaper journalist, my mom is a social worker. I come from very humble beginnings, but very, very proud beginnings. My very loving family, I'm the youngest of three boys. My parents will be celebrating their forty-eighth wedding anniversary next February. I didn't, I wasn't given a lot, other than a lot of love and a lot, and, and, and I wasn't the smartest student. I ultimately had to fight very hard to get my degrees. I joke that West Virginia Wesleyan set the standard, they set the bar for graduation, and I met that bar. So that's, that's, that was their goal, so I met it and got there. The reality is academically, I hit my stride later in life. I became very much interested in education as I got older, and that ultimately has inspired me to start the sports marketing business that I started as a side job to make a little extra money, because college coaches aren't very well compensated. I did that to make a little extra money to make ends meet for my family. I'm proud to have built that sports marketing, sports marketing business into a multimillion-dollar business. That hasn't happened on accident. That hasn't happened because, you know, everybody gave me everything along the way. But the reality is, I did have the support of a great public education system growing up. I did have a good community college to go to for a lower cost, and the reality is, is that I had a good education provided to me because it was well-funded and teachers could afford to live and stay in the community in which they taught. And my brother, who was six years older than me, had the same teachers that I did growing up and doing court. We simply don't have that ability in Prince William County anymore for teachers to stick around. We've got to focus on changing the priorities just, we, short-term priorities are certainly a reality, but we have to look further for our school system. We're simply going to continue to fail our students for the next ten or twenty years as well, because those decisions that we made for the next four years are going to have that long-lasting impact, and we need to make sure we do it with proper leadership. And my experience provides that proper leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conroy. Three minutes.
Let's talk about what it's going to take to be the school board chair. It's going to take somebody who understands our budget. That is very hard to do, not the way I've spent the last three years on the school board budget committee. So I have been up past midnight, I have been at the work sessions, capital improvement sessions alongside the school board members, reporters, and occasionally some citizens. I have been on the Board of County Supervisors Budget Committee. I have seen their critical net needs list. I have seen how they did set priorities, something that Prince William County Schools has enough done. I know how we are going to run right into a budget session, the learning curve, if you're not familiarized yourself with this budget, is going to be tremendous. I'm not going to have that. I have come through this budget for the last three years. I am ready to find the money in the budget and reallocate it to the things that are most important for our citizens, and that is to education. Everything we talk about, class size, priorities, you know, everything we talk about is a matter of funding what is most important. You cannot fund everything. A parent has sent me that he had a friend who said, "An education will never have enough money." It's true. We will always want to do more for our kids, but the taxpayers will have a point where they say, "No more." You know, I'm, I'm, we may need to increase taxes by twenty percent every year to meet the goals if we want to handle them quickly. But you're not going to say yes to that. You're going to have some limits of what you're willing to pay, and first thing you're going to say to me is, "Explain the budget." Pray to me that you're using it well. That's what I want to do. And then I want to say, and these are all the other wonderful things, which ones can we afford? What, what do you want to do? What is your vision of Prince William County in the future? Because that's what we're talking about. Education today is not just about that student in school today. It's about that adult that will be voting ten years from now. It is about the future. What do you want? Because in the end, the school board represents you. You have the control. You will have an open door with me. My name, my number is on every piece of literature I give out. I'm here for you, and I'm going to be listening to you.
Mr. Singstock.
Thank you. Great opportunity to come here and talk with you tonight. My top three priorities. Number one, class size reduction, starting with our middle school kids, where the problem is most acute. Number two, competitive teacher pay and treating our educators like the professionals they are so we can retain them here in Prince William County. Number three, offering a safe, healthy, drug-free learning environment for our kids and our staff. We didn't get the opportunity to talk about that tonight, so I'm going to address it right now very quickly. I want to make sure that our kids are safe while they are in transit to school and back. I want to make sure that our schools are safe before the bell rings in the morning and after the bell rings in the afternoon with respect to drug use and gangs. We have it in our community, we have it in our schools. We have to work together as a community to have a safe community so we can have safe schools, so we can have safe kids. You have a very important decision to make. You have the opportunity to elect a school board chairman who served this country as an officer in the United States Army. That's where my leadership experience started. I'm the district finance chair for the Boy Scouts. I chaired the Prince William County State Schools Advisory Council, and I've run public meetings in the Kelly Leadership Center with school division staff and parents. I'm an accountant. I'm a certified project management professional, and I've run IT projects with multimillion-dollar experience, and I'm a product of this school system. All thirteen years, I graduated from Toma High School. So on November 3rd, you have the opportunity to put one of your own on the school board as school board chairman. I have a very vested interest in making sure this is the best school division in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and I ask for your vote on November 3rd. Thank you for hosting this debate tonight. Thank you.
Round of applause for all three candidates, please. And with that, we conclude. Be sure to vote on November 3rd. Thank you all very much for attending. Safe travels home.